I'm here as well, so all of our co-curriculars can be housed in one area. Schools that are using this currently across New Hampshire.
Mr. Hess, excuse me, and Mr. Brunel? I'm hearing reports there's no sound on TV. Sorry for interruption.
Even better.
(laughing).
Okay, alright, great. Schools are using this across New Hampshire. Concord High School just went live with it. We were playing around with them, but the digital sponsorship potential is pretty high. Schools our size are raising about $10,000 a year in sponsorships and revenue through it.
It's good now.
So really just kind of looking to streamline, there's also a really neat kind of interactive aspect of it where if students attend sporting events or plays and musicals, they like check in on the app and they earn points. And as they earn more points, they can get free gear from our store. So schools have seen increase in participation, not just in the athletics, but also in the plays and musicals. So really just looking to increase attendance, streamline all of the communication and everything when it comes to athletics. This will never be a budgeted item, looking to use our fundraising money and/or local ad sponsors. It's $1,000 a year, so you know, three local ad sponsorships basically pay for this for us. If we can't, they use the fundraising account. But the big thing right now is after April 1st, it's going to go up to about $10,000 a year. So they're looking to get schools in now, and then after that April 1st deadline is when it's really going to balloon up with the price, so.
So will we then expect to pay $10,000 a year?
Nope. We will be locked in at that $1,000 every year. There's also a one-time fee of $500, so this first year it would be 1,500 bucks, and then every year after that it's $1,000.
Perpetuity or just forever?
Until we decide not to use it anymore, yes. It links with our BSN Sports Stores. All of our streaming goes right through that app as well, so if you're looking to stream a game through Huddle, you don't have to go to a separate thing. It's all located right within that app. So it really does streamline and house everything together. There's communication aspects to it, so coaches can push out information specifically to their team, to families, and you can choose to follow certain teams. It's really super customizable to make it a great experience for individual families and community members.
Is this an app that's budgeted for next year?
It's not in the budget. It'll never be in the budget. It would just be.
I'd raise it.
And it's also, it has the highest certification of New Hampshire privacy rights, like it has their highest certification, so it covers all of that aspect as well.
So has Chris gone through this and vetted it?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the name of the app again?
It's called FanX. It's run through a company called Snap, which is like a fundraising platform.
Oh, okay. So I think it's interesting, I think it's interesting that it can be used for more than just athletics.
Yeah.
It can be used for, you know, other co-curriculars. It sounds like there's a lot of really good applications, like we can, you know, fundraising could go through it, you know, for the whole school.
Yes, it's really neat. And I mean, you can do principal's newsletters through it, coaching newsletters, like our athletic director is doing, gonna do a newsletter with recaps and stuff. So it's a lot of information in one central area instead of you've got to go to this NHIA website to find the scores from last night, or you've got to go to this area to find a schedule.
Yep. Is there, is this in lieu of final forms, or will that be in addition to it, like linking to it?
We can link everything through final forms to this app as well and push it out through that way.
It's convenient.
Yeah.
Yeah? Cool. Sounds like a good idea. Are you looking for a motion tonight?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second, additional discussion? Alright, I'll call the question. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero.
Great, thanks. Mr. Ramos really wishes he could be here tonight. He's on hockey senior night. Thank you.
Alright, thanks for the presentation. Alright, next up, we have New Hampshire Department of Labor Visit, and I'll welcome Ms. Falzone up to the table.
Thank you.
How are you doing tonight?
Not great. Okay, so Brian talked about at the last schoolwork meeting that we were having an audit from the Department of Labor. I met with a lady named Paula from the Department of Labor on February 11th, and what she was coming to look at was safety program and safety rules. So she was looking at the safety program that we have. She looked at, and we talked about our Joint Loss Management Committee. She asked to see agendas and past minutes, and through the Joint Loss Management Committee, we do building walkthroughs once a year, so she asked to see some of that stuff from last year. She also was looking at student violent prevention and management plan. We currently do not have one of those, and so she helped me, like showed some other districts and what they used and what we need to do in ours. She had told me when we met on the 11th that by Friday, the 14th, she'd have a report for me. She ended up being out sick, and I talked to her on Monday, and she said she hopes to have a report for us with findings at the end of the week. I'm assuming what those are going to be is that we need to update our safety plan. I've been working on some updates, and we have a Joint Loss Management Committee meeting tomorrow, and I have the updated plan in there. She's going to tell us to develop a student violent prevention and management plan, so that you can put also in the safety plan. She was very nice and very helpful. They're, you know, just looking to make sure as a school district, we're protecting employees, protecting staff if there's student violence. So more information to come when I have that report.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any questions? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll just add, I think the state figured out we have a lot of new people, because they seem to be auditing us on everything right now. Next up, we got an email this week about New Hampshire retirement, so it's great. We're going to keep coming with stuff.
School care or insurance company, which you might have heard some chatter about in the back. So every so often, they pick a district to audit, so everyone on your plan, if you have a spouse on there, you have to send marriage certificates. If any children on the plan, you have to upload birth certificates. So they're going through everybody we got picked, so we're uploading all that.
It does.
Documentation, so busy.
Right. Next up on the agenda, we have our student representative report. Welcome Nick and Danny.
One sec, guys. I'll put it up on the screen.
How's school going?
Good.
Yeah?
Yeah, ready for February break?
Yeah, alright.
Alright, so boys' basketball, end of their season with a record of 5-12, and won their first playoff game last night at Campbell. Girls' basketball season is over, they ended 4-13. Boys hockey is now 3-8-1, and they have a game at home against La Conia, Winescom, Interlakes at 7:30 tonight. Winter track is over, they have their state meet at UNH, and Bridget plays six, and Callie Duncan plays six also in the 3,000 meter race. And wrestling, have your state championship meet on the 22nd.
So boys' basketball, 5-12 or 15-2?
Did I say 5-12?
Yeah.
Meant to say 15-2.
That's a big difference.
Well, that's way better.
I say 5-12 makes the playoffs.
Some like current things we had last week was student councils late after school one week, and we did strawberry dipping in the fax room. Student staff in SAU on Friday during advisory. Also throughout last week, we sold carnations and roses, and this year it's something new. All the proceeds from that went to a scholarship for a senior on student council, so that was nice. And then on Wednesday morning, we had our drink card committee come to the school bright and early to make staff some Valentine's Day drinks.
So the week before break, like as you already know, we're doing the winter carnival, so advisors are getting points for doing little things around the school. And the dress-up days this week are Monday, PJ Day, Tuesday, Camo Day, Wednesday, Jersey Day, Thursday, Alexander Day, and Friday, Class Color Day. And if you wear those, then you get like points to your advisory, and at the end, whoever has the most points wins. And we're going to have the pep rally on Friday to get more points for, it's going to be like challenges to win them points. And then there's also like little contests throughout the week that we're doing, like Find the Cooper, where you just go around the school and look for it, and if you find it, then you get points for advisory. So that's just kind of a little event room for break.
Some of the future things we have going on, we have our Valentine's Day semi-formal, but it got postponed. On the over break, Campbell Chorus and Concert Band will be performing at Universal Studios. I'm really excited with that. And then obviously we have break, but a new thing that we just found out was that Campbell's athletes are going to be competing in the state contest on March 17th at NHJ.
You ever gone to a math meet? I've gone to a few in my time. They're intense. They are very intense.
I can actually go that one. We got Aaron Fekidi. He actually got first in the math meet out of everyone. It was the small school division at NH Smash on the 12th, and he got first and got a $500 scholarship.
That's cool. Congratulations.
I'll also add that Aaron's been named a national merit or something.
Awesome. Good for him.
Wow. Congratulations.
Great.
And, sorry, Science Honors Bio is working on their stop-motion animation projects for the cell cycle, and Bridget Hidalgo got her two tables poem published in the American Library of Poetries, 2024. And Youth and Gov are finalizing writing bills for their legislative conference at the State House in April, and their mock's going to go through, sorry, their mock will go through the same process at the State House at the weekend overnight.
So we have a couple new additions to our slides where we're going to go over other schools. I highly encourage you to jump in if you want.
I know, you got this. You're good.
The fifth graders are beginning their study of a star structure used to be used by Native Americans, and the relationship of human symbolizes hope, friendship, and community, as well as hospitality. The seventh graders are starting to be working on their study of ancient Rome and their methods of battles. And then a new thing that LMS is having is a wellness day. I know that we got told that they did it for staff a couple weeks ago, and they wanted to implement it for the students. So they are going to be having a choice of breakout sessions that focus on self-care wellness and healthy choices. They're going to be making their selections soon, and some of their like options are the science of sleep, financial wellness, and crime investigation.
People are excited about this day. It's going to be phenomenal. I cannot wait.
But you're going to choose sleep.
(laughing).
And then at Griffin, grades one and two have visits from the science exploration focusing on sunlight and bubbles. Grade four, they're almost done working with Dr. Chuck from Granite State Fit Kids. They've colored heart, cardio, lungs, respiratory, the effects of nicotine, digestions, and nutrition. Last step, they have bones, brain, and muscles, sorry.
Nice. Thanks for the add of additions there. That's great. Any questions for our student representatives tonight? Lots of exciting things happening across the district. Congratulations to all those awards at Campbell High School, making us proud as a district. Well done.
Do you guys know when the next boys' basketball playoff game is? Because I know they want fans Friday.
6:00 PM.
At CHS?
Yeah, at CHS.
(inaudible).
Yep.
Then we have Winter Fest at GMS tomorrow night as well. Five o'clock start time, right?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, yeah. There's going to be some cardio drumming, some people are.
Cardio drumming. I'm so excited.
For some reason, I do not get asked to do the cardio drumming.
I mean, and you're reading in the library.
I am reading in the library, yes.
Yeah, me and my counterpart, Phil Fuller, are going to cardio drum. We're all about it.
We do it at our school. Gym and music, we combine our gym and music classes into it together. So fun.
We're so excited.
Alright, next up is community comment on agenda items, and this particular community comment is limited to three minutes tonight. Any community comment this evening? Welcome, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you. Dan Mitchell, Principal Griffin Memorial School. I see that there's going to be a conversation later about the deliberative session, and I'm here to let you know that unfortunately, there was two warrants that were left off the deliberative section, and those are the two Griffin Memorial School kids' votes. So the official ballot is to be. (laughing). Not played that well, huh?
Like a legitimate heart attack there for a second.
I read that presentation very thoroughly.
Article one, Mr. Mitchell shall be compelled to perform one of the below-listed actions on a date to be determined and communicated. Majority vote required. Recommended, I assume, by the school board 500. Not recommended by Mr. Mitchell, 010. Select your choice, sing a song at an assembly, get duct taped to a chair, and does a student-created obstacle course at field day. Article two, Ms. Crowley and the GMS Food Service Department shall be compelled to create one of the following lunch choices on a future date to be decided and communicated, recommended by the school board, I assume, 500. Select your choice, chicken and waffles basket, meatball sub with french fries, or a sausage and egg donut sandwich with hash browns. Those would be at town voting, off to the side, so when the kids come with their parents to vote, they can also get to vote on these two kid warrant articles.
I don't know that I can endorse Article two without sampling the options first. So if Ms. Crowley is watching, she wants to bring samples.
Doing that, I would like to see Mr. Mitchell sample all three of those options as well. Did anyone bring any duct tape?
I'll take to a chair. Good evening, Mr. Oblenas.
Good day, good day. Ron Oblenas, 15 Rivers Circle. And that's a tough act to follow. I'm not sure which choice I'd make on that last one, though. I just wanted to revisit some discussion points that were at deliberative, specifically related to the LSSA contract. At the deliberative session, I made one observation that I want to correct, that my assumption was that the increases did not include steps. That was brought up, that it did. I've gone back and found documentation that the steps are included. So I appreciate that. But I was challenged on apparently not reading the contract when I brought up the fact that over the course of these three years, that the contract would increase salaries in the step category up to 20, would be increased at the end of the three years, 22.3%. I've gone back and researched that, and specifically looked at this table here, that's the chart, and that is the correct figures. So my point being, again, is that I find it somewhat disingenuous that the effect of the steps and the longevity payments that is included in the increases in salary were not specifically called out and identified in the net effect. From your summary sheets, the net effect each year, the first year is 6.81%, the second year is 6.3%, and the third year is 6.22%. The total of that compounded results in a, this is steps and longevity, a 20%, 20.6%. So I just wanted to highlight that what I said at deliberative, according to what I believe is published, is correct. And I want to highlight that I find it difficult and disappointing that the net effect of the total increase was not presented. And that was actually one of the things in the Budget Committee that came out, that somebody brought that up, and I think was the reason the Budget Committee did not vote in recommendation for it.
Thank you very much. Alright, any other public comment this evening? Alright, hearing and seeing none, this is another round of community comment at the end of tonight's meeting, or eight o'clock, whichever one comes sooner. Moving into correspondence.
Yes, thank you. On February 7th, Jan Sullivan emailed to the board, circled, emailed the board circulating draft, February 5th, 2025, public minutes. As a reminder, there are not non-public minutes for that day, because we did not have it. On February 8th, Mr. Cutter emailed to Mr. Oblenas, a community member, copying the board and superintendent regarding Mr. Oblenas' candidacy for the Budget Committee and there being a potential for a conflict of interest if he continues to serve as a voting member on both Facilities Improvement Committee and the Budget Committee. On February 9th, Mr. Oblenas emailed the board regarding the LSSA contract and the impact on the tax rate, and indicated he would attend the meeting tonight to present his findings, which he just did. On February 12th, Anne Indamarotti emailed circulating the 403B manifest. On February 12th, Rene Burgess emailed the board with a reminder to submit our letter for the town annual report, and there were responses from myself and Mr. Cutter. On February 14th, Anne Indamarotti emailed the board circulating the accounts payable manifest for review. On February 14th, Rene Burgess emailed the board circulating the draft, February 19th, 2025 Agenda. On February 14th, Mr. Oblenas emailed Andrew Cutter, copying the school board, the Budget Committee, the select board, town hall, superintendent, and Facilities Improvement Committee with a detailed response to Mr. Cutter's email about a potential conflict of interest to serve as a voting member on Budget Committee and FIC at the same time. Mr. Oblenas indicated that he was requiring that this matter be reviewed by town and school attorneys and investigate election interference. He also expressed his desire to remain on FIC even if elected, as a voting member, even if elected to the Budget Committee. On February 17th, superintendent emailed the school board circulating the draft voter's guide for review one final time. On February 19th, John David Sun, Budget Committee Chair, emailed the school board. He did request, and this is the last correspondence, so I posed this question because I don't want to be the person to determine it. He did request that his entire email be read into correspondence at our school board meeting. The summary that, if I wasn't reading the whole email, says that it's advocating that if Mr. Oblenas is elected to Budget Committee, he have a, Mr. Oblenas have a non-voting role on the FIC as established by longstanding Budget Committee practice. I guess I'm posing the question to the group in terms of how we want to handle requests to read emails in their entirety. On the one hand, I'm happy to do it. I copied and pasted it, and I have it here. On the other hand, for time purposes, if people request their entire emails continue to be read into, I just worry about ongoing precedent for the future, so I have the email here and prepared to read it. I just didn't want to make that decision myself and pose it to the board.
Okay, I'll open up for board discussion.
Question, hasn't it typically been the, if somebody asks that it be read into the record, that it be read into the record? Have we done that in the past?
I can't speak for school board. I know on other committees, yes.
I think on, maybe it's the select board, I've seen them do it.
Yeah.
It's not a common request? So I, in my years on the board, I can say I have personally, having done this now, been vice chair twice for two years, one is my turn. I, I'm short and sweet with my summaries, because everything is there, I'm trying to move it along for time, I try to hit the high points. If people disagree with that, I can get into more detail and read, but again, I'm out for whatever the board wants to do. If I have it right here and I'm happy to read it, and it's not that, that it's that long, I just wanted to pose the question to the group.
So my question about it is, do we send the emails to be attached to the minutes? Or do we just send the correspondence summary?
Jan Sullivan has access to the correspondence summary.
Okay. So, I mean, my thought in this case, and you know, feel free to disagree, but my thought is if we, rather than read it and into the record, it would be just as easy to attach it to the minutes in its entirety, you know, and potentially save a little bit of time at the meeting. We've all read it, we've all seen it, but if someone asks.
I think that's a pretty good solution, honestly, is to just put the whole letter into the, into the minutes, although we've probably taken as much time as it would have taken to read it.
We probably have. But again, the only reason I ask the question is just for future precedent, because if somebody sends in a three-page, single-spaced email that they want read into the record, are we setting the precedent that I'm, that whoever is in this role is going to read that? I just want to be mindful. Again, common sense approach is also fine as well. I just wanted to ask the question, because I know that other boards do read that into correspondence, and I certainly am trying to be as transparent as possible with what's said in the email. It's not a secret, it's public record, but.
I think as long as it's accessible, like I think that that's a fine idea. I don't, I don't know that we should get into the habit of, because if we start having, you know, four or five people submitting emails, like we could be sitting here reading emails aloud for a very long time.
I have personally no problem with being read into the record, but that's just my view, I think.
I also don't have a problem with it, so it doesn't.
Following other board practice, you know, if somebody specifically requests that they have a reason to do so, we should be transparent with that to the public, but that's my view, so.
So I'm happy, why don't I do this? My thought process would be, well, a suggestion, if it's going to take, we have a three-minute limit for public comment, if reading an email into, reading the email will take longer than three minutes, I think perhaps that should be attached, and then maybe reading something that's less than three minutes isn't.
(inaudible).
How fast I talk? I'm a pretty fast talker, but no, you're right. We should just have a straight, just have a flat.
Somebody make a motion, we'll go from there. Like a.
Just tell me to read it or not.
I'll make a motion to read it if it's going to take less than three minutes.
Good luck on that one.
(inaudible) board, Mr. Cutter, you can't read just that email, because it has no context to what prompted his email. You don't read all of the response.
Alright, so I'll entertain a board motion. You didn't have a second.
I'll make a motion to just attach it to the minutes.
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Ames, further discussion. Alright, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Abstained, motion carries 410.
Just so it's clear, and because it doesn't get lost in the discussion, my summary of the email from Mr. Sun is, he was advocating that if Mr. Oblenas is elected to the Budget Committee, that he have a non-voting role in FIC as established by longstanding Budget Committee practice. That's my summary. And that's all the correspondence.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Alright, we'll turn it over to the superintendent. Next up is enrollment.
Yeah, so we have the enrollment report. We're at 11:14 for the district, just where we were on opening day, so we're right back where we started, a little bit up, a little bit down as the year kind of goes on.
When do kindergarten registrations, where does that process start?
February 24th. So over vacation, we'll officially start seeing communications this week about it.
Okay.
There was a, it's later than we want to, but there was a glitch with the state hyper speed.
Yeah, they're changing it.
State.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda is we have deliberative debrief, and should we, is this where?
Yeah, we can have Paulie come up, talk about LSSA.
Yeah, we can have a polycome, yeah, talk about LSSA.
So onto the agenda this evening and going back to deliberative, we have some summary information on the LSSA details, and we've asked Ms. Felzone to come up here and, and give us a summary tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome again.
Thanks. Up, down, up, down.
I did see your hand back there, by the way, so.
So I wanted to clarify something that Mr. Oblenas said when he, the LSSA tentative agreement overview is a public document, and the last couple of pages show our, how we calculated salaries and benefits. It also has our salary schedules. So at the end of each, at the end of each year on, in our salary schedules, we figure out, you know, what the average percentage increases, the percentage increases that he were reading, that he was reading to, for example, 6.81 percent. I want to make it clearly known, that is not just salaries, that takes into account on these spreadsheets, FICA, so Social Security and Medicare taxes, these are the costs to the district, retirement, and the increase in salaries. When we do, there was questions on how, you know, we calculate this type of information, so we would look at negotiations, we would say, okay, on October 1, we're starting negotiations, we would pull everyone in the bargaining unit at that point, we go through and figure out salary grids, and what we would do is, so for the current tentative agreement next year, it says they get a step. So you adjust the grid, you add a step to everyone, as you can see on the spreadsheet, then you would look at the increase, what is going in the warrant article is the difference of the calculated cost of salaries and benefits for this year compared to next year. Again, that includes also insurance and taxes. That is not money, not insurance, retirement and taxes, that is not money that goes directly to the employee, it's the cost to the district, it's the cost to the taxpayers, it's the cost in the budget. The budget for next year does, has zero increases in it for salaries and benefits. For the support staff, because their contract ends on June 30th, if that contract were not to pass, they stay exactly where they are at their current pay rate, they do not get a step, nothing changes for them. And then calculating year two and three is the exact same way, is you take everyone where they are, if you're increasing them a step, you take the difference from the previous year, and you're estimating years two and three at that point because people change and come and go. Is there anything else you want me to add, or is that?
Any other points to highlight, any other questions?
I think, you know, the thought process, I mean, Tina and I were the ones who served on the negotiating team for this contract, and.
Who wasn't?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matt! Oh! I'm sorry, Matt!
I was only saying once.
Sorry. I'm sorry, it was Matt. Matt and I served. Matt, 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 there you go. And I think this is a very fair contract. I mean, this is, this is about people who, I mean, you have to look at the amount that we're basing this off of. When you see an increase and you hear someone throwing out a number of a 20% increase, that sounds obviously really, really high, but when you're talking about $13 an hour as a starting pay, I mean, that's, anyway, I, I won't get into the details of it, today's not a, tonight's not a time for advocacy, but these people deserve this.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else on deliberative we wanted to talk about this evening?
No, I mean, I'll just speak for myself, I was super nervous because it was our first deliberative, and overall, I'm glad we got through. Glad there was no new school building or anything after watching the video from last year and stuff. But I just want to thank everyone's support as we prepare things for that. Thank you to the Board for your presentations during deliberative, and the people who were able to attend, we appreciate, you know, community involvement, people coming to deliberative and stuff, so.
All right, great. Second review of school calendars for next year.
Yeah, so this is the same three options that we had last year when we spoke. What we're looking to do is move one of these forward as our school calendar for next year. We did send out the calendar through our Weekend Message to the community to get some feedback. I can put up a nice little graph that Dr. Taylor put together for us here, give me one moment. So option one, just the, blue is everyone's, we asked you to rank the three calendar options, blue is your first choice, red was the second choice, or yellow was the third choice. Option one, just to summarize, had the PD days, because we need to kind of, essentially what we're doing is inserting two PD days into the calendar. One, to lead off Columbus Day weekend, and then the second one between the two semesters, semester one and second two in January. That was, you know, overwhelmingly the second choice, the people responding to the survey. The second calendar option was the one, and for the record, just option one was my personal preference because it was option one, that's why. Option two was the December days, so kind of the inverse of what we did this year with the school calendar, rather than have two professional development days at the end of that holiday break, we would kick off the holiday break with two professional development days on the 22nd and 23rd. And then option three was a professional development day in October along Columbus Day, and then an additional conference day in April at the equivalent time in the spring is, was the idea behind that. So we just threw this out here, we're not bound by this, I was clear that we were not bound by this when we sent this out, but it would be interesting to hear feedback from the community. I think there's a clear distinct one choice. I will say this, I will not, we got comments, I'm, I'm not going to put, blast them up on the screen here because people are submitting them, and honestly, I don't want to blow up their spots there. While it was the favorite choice, the people who are anti-option two were very anti-option two, it was the one we got the most comments about, please don't do this. So the people who didn't like it were not fans of having that extended two-week break, but clearly you can see it was the favorite of the people here, you know. I think the concern with that, and it's a valid concern, is it can be hard on working families to have the kids home for two weeks on that when most other school districts have kids back in the buildings on those days. Like I said last time, I was not very thrilled when I saw the school calendar that we had those PD days this year at January. Kudos to the people, the LEA, to Dr. Taylor, to her team, who designed those two days, they were incredibly beneficial to our staff, so I turned around on it 100%. And we would probably follow a similar format next December to do those days, so we would get a lot of benefit from it from a staff perspective. It may be a little bit easier on families because you're starting Christmas ahead of that, and you're, I won't say usually, but families tend to travel more at the beginning of the holiday season than they do at the end of the holiday season, so maybe that would be, that would be easier on families to, to absorb it at the beginning there. Like I said, my personal preference, because it was the, the schedule I taught in, just being completely transparent, was option one that had the, the PD day to extend Columbus weekends with a PD day on the Friday going on the Columbus weekend, and then a kind of PD day between the two semesters in January there. So I turn it over to the Board, you're ultimately the ones to approve it. I just clarify, these are good questions people ask, these came from some of the comments different people I talked to. We have to align with Hudson on what their start time is, they're essentially a meet, School Board meeting ahead of us in their calendar, so we look at our start date, we start before Labor Day because there are some good questions, and why don't we start after Labor Day? It's as simple as Hudson is starting before Labor Day, so we need to try and mirror them as much as possible because of CTE. We have a limit on how often we can be different from them because they are our primary sending CTE center, so it is helpful to start on the same day. Those limits include possible snow days and other things, so you kind of have to, you got to start pretty close within a day of, of your CTE center. And that was a big thing, and, and something I want to continue to explore, but I think it needs just some work on developing the idea, is the idea of early release professional development days. One, I think is something we need to do through contract negotiations, the way that the contract's written, and two, make sure that we educate our community on the value of those because those can be challenging on families. I speak from personal experiences, as my own, my home district where, where my child attends does that type of model, bi-monthly, where they have a district-wide early release day for professional development. Can be very powerful for staff, but it can also face some challenges for families, so we just, it's something in the future, we're not ready to go there next year in an official capacity on the school calendar, but it's something that, you know, I'm speaking selfishly here, I would like to at least explore some more in the, in the future for, for our staff.
I'm also speaking selfishly.
So I guess I'll turn it over to the Board for any questions, and then your guidance on what direction you'd like to go with the school calendar.
I think it's pretty clear that Andrew replied at least 30 times in the.
I didn't reply.
I'm just kidding. I, I just would like to point out, though, with respect to option two, when people are talking about having difficulties, the 23rd is still an early release day.
Yes.
So we're talking about a day and a half.
It's a day and a half, and every day is very valuable in school, we do lots of learning every single school day, but if we're being completely honest, there might be a little less late learning on those two days before a holiday break. So now there's valuable social time, there's valuable time, I saw the high school kids' heads not there a little bit. It's valuable educational time, there's more learning that we can do, not just confined to the, the four walls of a classroom. But if we are going to be completely honest, a day and a half or two days in front of a holiday break may not be the most strenuous educational days that we have of the school year.
I'm fine with option one. Does anyone not like option one?
I personally like option two.
I want option two.
You want option two?
Yeah. I don't not like option one. Option one's fine. To be clear, I don't feel strongly about this, and I also recognize, I don't have young kids anymore, so I have the benefit of, it doesn't matter to me, my kids will be home alone that day, so it, I, I get that. I personally heard a lot of positive feedback, and maybe that's just the circle I run in about the two weeks off. I'm aware it's really difficult for some of the younger families, but again, and we're only talking about a day and a half, and, you know, my guess is December 22nd and 23rd, half-day, there's not a lot of educational, there's some really good Christmas parties or holiday parties, and there's some really good cookies and treats, but I don't know how much educational time there is.
This might be, if I may, a good opportunity for our School Board.
I was just going to ask them what they.
Contribute to this conversation.
Personally, like, obviously, I'm a kid who's very involved in everything, and like, I'm counting down the days since breaks because like, that's when I like, kind of get away from everything, and I like unstress myself, and so like, I know like this year, like, it was like a whole, like, starting a whole new school year, like, those two weeks, like, I think it really helped.
Like refreshing?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, having two weeks compared to like one week is just completely different, especially like not getting cut off like halfway, when you have like those two, like, that weekend leading up into it, it just like, it makes it seem so much longer.
I appreciate that from high school students who drive and are.
Oh, 100%.
Right, it's the, it's the elementary kids and the middle school kids who are not sufficiently efficient, who do require parents at home, right, who are using the stove and shouldn't be using the stove, you know what I mean? Like, the struggle's real.
You had a real bad week this time.
The struggle's real, right? I mean.
I am an elementary age kid, and it was very beneficial, I could drop her off on school on January 2nd and 3rd.
Just, just a thought process, I mean, and again, I say this, if we choose to go with option two, I think we should collect a listed name of high school students who want to babysit on December 22nd and 23rd, because I think you would actually get a bunch that would sign up to earn a little money before Christmas.
You get student council to, or, you know, a group at school to babysit.
It doesn't need to be through the school, but I just, I think there would be high school students who would be happy.
I think Danny's volunteering to spearhead that effort, right?
Especially on the half-day, the half-day, you can bus kids directly to the high school.
All right, I'm a firm option two. I make a motion to recommend option two.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second, dishonour discussion.
I have, my kids are old.
You have no skin in your. All right, all those in favor approving option two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Obstained, motion carries 410.
You can have grace for the day.
Okay. So I just want to add one last thing with the school calendar. You may have noticed, we made some cosmetic changes to the actual calendar. We're not going to, that is the structure of the calendar, but we're still tweaking that cosmetics a little bit with the school calendar, so just in the effort of complete transparency.
Would you like the listing on the bottom?
Yeah.
Yeah, the listing on the bottom, making sure we have the right holidays, the right accuracy and all that stuff. There's a suggestion to add the day count to the calendar, like how far we are into the school year through it. So Renee's been working on that formatting to make sure that that looks sharp and crisp there, so just so people know, like, we're going to tweak the, the visual a little bit to make sure that it, it works and stuff like that.
If not, you can always count on your first and second grade teachers to know what day of school it is.
You know, Dan, Principal Mitchell sends like a daily email.
Oh, with the number on it?
With the number of day it is, and it's like, it's, it's awesome, because that's how I keep track of the school year.
Well, you have to be ready for the 100th day when it comes, so.
It passed, like, we're past it, yes.
I know, I know, it's awesome.
Today 109.
What's that?
109.
Today's 109, I believe it.
Nice.
And then the next item is just the School Board calendar, we have to fill out some of the stuff still, but the general idea is on the meeting dates, and we can bring this back next Board meeting, cleaned up even a little bit more now to reflect the calendar that you just approved, but I don't want to lose sight of it. We want to be ahead of our dates for this upcoming school year, and make sure that we mark off important meeting dates such as, you know, budget presentation dates, deliberative, potential deliberate dates for the School Board and for us selfishly in the SAE to make sure, as we schedule events and schedule different things and make our calendar and events for next year, that we have this in mind on where everything is headed. So not a lot of updates on this yet, but we'll probably bring this back next meeting again with reflecting where we, the school calendar that, that we just approved. I'm looking for probably a final approval next meeting on this, this, this agenda item, so.
Okay.
So if you have any feedback, any dates, nothing, we're pretty good on the first and third, it wasn't like this year where there were some quirks with the vacation times and stuff, so we got off to a second or fourth week or anything like that. But, you know, if you have any feedback, please let us know.
My only suggestion, and I, after having been on School Board for four years, I feel like I can make a suggestion to this now, is to say that maybe the 17th or the 3rd, one of those be an optional meeting that we have there as a hold, that month is so busy with all of the diff, uh, December.
December, yeah.
With all of the different school activities going on, the ability for us to be able to be out in the community and attending some of the holiday events and everything that's going on, obviously warrant article-wise, if we need to, that's, and I get it, if it's a, you know, so that's why I said either the 3rd or the 17th, but.
And especially what we're considering for next year, that's going to be an important one.
But hopefully we're not doing it in December. My goal, I, I, we're having those conversations much earlier than December, if we're having them in December, Budget Committee's going to be mad at us again, so I, you know, ideally would be having those.
I agree.
In a better, I, I'm just throwing it out there for consideration if we're making changes, because in the past, that month is just incredibly difficult.
I think that'd be a good goal, you know, again, part of this is selfishly, we're mapping out our years, you know, that we're getting a year under our belts, the rhythm of, of different meetings and schedules, when we should have different things done internally and everything like that. So, you know, if we have in our mind possibly that 17th being a day of if-needed meeting date, you know what I mean, that allows us to backtrack our scheduling, we're doing budget proposals and all those type of things, and move that stuff up and, and hopefully make that easier for everybody, so. This year was obviously a growing year as we learned the system and learned everything, but we, our intent is to be much more, not, not that we're necessarily buying, but more, even more ahead of it next year when we're doing all of this, so keep that in mind.
All right, we'll get this cleaned up and take another look at it in a couple weeks.
All right. The last thing is, is kind of a, a discussion item, I'm going to be, there's a link for you to, to kind of link there, with kind of a summary, it's brief, just because we do have to, to keep some confidentiality in mind here when we talk about our special education students and out-of-district tuition and, and those type of things. So essentially, we have, you know, as the year goes along, we monitor our, what we're spending and projecting out and what we're going to spend for the year and making sure that we're not going over budget, so on and so forth. One of the biggest lines to do this with is our out-of-district tuition line. And we had a budgeted this year about, I'm using round numbers here, about $706,000 for out-of-district tuition. We are currently projecting to spend approximately $692,000 of that, which makes us good from a budgeting standpoint, we're kind of on task where that was, and so that, we're in good shape on that. Why I bring that up, though, is we're still in this point in school year, things can change and things can, can go up or down, we estimate these costs, simple things like kids being out sick has an effect on this cost, changes in programming, so on and so forth, so these are still just estimates until, until we're done with the year. But that estimate, that projection, does not include a new enrollment that we had to the district that is going to be affecting this line, this out-of-district tuition line. As we work through that situation and what it's going to be, we're approximating the cost of, of this placement, we're going to continue an out-of-district placement that a student is having for us as they arrive to the district. Mid-year, it would be, that's, that's the right thing to do, team decides that and everything like that. We're projecting that cost to be anywhere between thirty-five and sixty thousand dollars additional that we'll need to spend on out of district tuition this year, projecting the cost of the student. We got the, the first bill for the student this week. And doing that projection out of that, that's what we're seeing to be. We will have an even better idea on this particular situation a month from now. Once we have a full cycle of everything, right? We get, sometimes with these out of district tuitions, you get the bills by service and by different things. It's not just one big bill from, from a, a place and stuff like that. So a month from now, once we have a, a full picture of, of the experiences for, for the student, we'll have an even better idea. But we're kind of projecting that we could be over, over budget in that line by about sixty thousand dollars. This is exactly why you have a capital, you have a capital reserve fund. Is if you, if a situation arises, such as a student moving into your district that you didn't have planned for when you were doing the budgeting for, for said line, you can access a reserve fund to help offset these increased costs. So one of the things I would like to discuss this board is this idea of withdrawing from this special education capital reserve fund. So up to or maybe sixty thousand dollars would be the amount because that is the estimate of what we think this could cost in addition for the student. If we were to do that, just like in other, other times that we've accessed our funds, we would have to have a public hearing and go through that process, post it and so on and so forth. I would recommend having, actually, if we move forward with this and start to take the steps to do this, do that public hearing. And actually, I know it's gonna sound far away, but the first meeting in April, that allows us to settle the new board when we have elections. Technically, that new board isn't in place for the second meeting in March yet. Like, we have to formally do that. You all know that. So this would also allow us to have a clearer picture on exactly what we're looking to withdraw from this account because we'll have some months under our belt with the student as part of, a part of our district. But I just want to make you aware that this could be as much as sixty thousand dollars that we're looking to, to pull from this reserve fund. We have about, putting Julie on the spot, so I might take our second to pull the amount. I want to say a hundred and sixty off the top of my head. In that reserve fund.
Yes, one sixty-six.
One sixty-six in that reserve fund, so we obviously have it. We talked about this particular fund through the warrant article process. This is one of our warrant articles looking to, you know, transfer some end of the year funds into this article if it passes through the budgeting process for these exact situations, the ones that arise and, and they're unexpected costs, you want to cover it. You know, if we pull sixty thousand dollars from this reserve, it becomes part of our, our money that we have this year. We don't turn it back over to the fund at the end of the year. If we were not to spend that sixty thousand dollars, and this is why you have to be careful on, on these type of things, is then that goes back just into your general end of the year fund and will likely be returned back to the taxpayers as part of that type of end of the year money that you have there. So you want to make sure you get that amount right as possible. It's there for these situations. You don't want to be careless with what you're pulling from that amount of money because you need that money in reserve literally for these, these type of situations. So I want to bring this to the board's attention, ask you to discuss it. And if you'd like to move forward with us setting up the, the public hearing for this and taking the steps forward to, to do this type of withdrawal.
I'll make a motion to.
Go ahead.
I will make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in April to, to withdraw. That's what he said.
Up to sixty. I think we would finalize as, as time goes on, finalize that number a little bit more concretely and have that.
Is it possible we will need more?
I don't think so, but, and I'm, I'm pretty confident about that, you know. But, but dynamics can change. We have this.
Say schedule.
Right, so.
It's public, a public.
Can someone second this so we can have discussion on it?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. One thing I just think we should consider, I know that this is what this is for. But I'm, I'm sort of thinking that maybe we should wait toward, closer to the end of the year because we, we have the money. It's not like we have to release the money to be able to pay the bills right now.
Right.
Right. You know, there's two things that we're trying to achieve this year. We're trying to build up the reserves. And we're also trying to level out the tax impacts by not returning massive amounts of money. And so I don't know what our end of the year money's gonna look like, but let's just say hypothetically speaking, it was four hundred thousand dollars that we were gonna return. I, I think it would be better to use the sixty from that and try to get closer to the two hundred that we're budgeting so that that, that way the tax impact is actually starting to feel the way that it should feel. And also preserve some of the money that's in the account. Because I personally think that this account needs to be much higher than it is.
I agree with you.
So that's just my feeling is I'd rather not release the money prematurely. I'd rather wait until we know, until we're close to the end of the year and have an idea of what.
But our under, underspend is already, if we have underspend an amount of about four hundred thousand dollars, I have no idea what we're projecting.
That was a, that was a random number.
Right, but we have warrant articles that, that will go to fund, so.
Our underspend, but we can still make the decision to hold a public hearing prior to the end of the fiscal year.
You, you can. And there, districts handle this all different ways, right? When it comes to these type of expenses, like this is a smaller district, so sixty thousand dollars is a significant amount of money, right? If you're in a bigger district, you would just absorb this into your budget and not think twice about it, right? Like, but they're dealing with much, much, much higher, higher numbers and volume of these type of things, right? So you can, what you're articulating here is exactly kind of what you have to decide, right? Like, we can wait, but, you know, we do know we're gonna have some costs here. And, you know, we've talked about this through the budgeting process and stuff like this. And we said like, this is coming, it is here, you know, like, and just to notify people that this is, this is the process. I think we're being very responsible having this discussion now in late February, you know. Because there are certainly unfortunately districts that, you know, are not as attuned to this and have put themselves in challenging positions around, around special education and stuff like that, so.
Could we cancel the public hearing if for whatever reason we decided the second meeting in March, that we don't need to access it just yet if something changes? Or is, once a public hearing is scheduled, we're committed to having a withdrawal?
I would have to get clarity on that.
We don't have to schedule it now. We have time. If it's not until April, we can schedule this in March. We can schedule the second meeting in March for April.
We would just have to.
There has to be a certain number of days.
Yeah, yeah. So when we post it through like the union leader, for example, we have certain timelines.
But even if it was, even if we had it in May.
We have to tell them like a week and a half in advance. Like, they pushed out their date of informing them to like post it and stuff like that.
But that's my point, right? We can do it at our second meeting in March and you still have plenty of time for, for the.
No, but what I would pause on that is you don't have a board yet. Remember? Because we'll have voting on March eleventh. That's like the board, I, meeting I run to start, like it's superintendent. So I get the gavel, it's a hammer at once. So you may, you don't have a board in place to have the public hearing at the beginning of that meeting. You could do it after the meeting, like if you wanted to do it the second meeting in March. Does that make, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's why I would think you would want to do the hearing in April when you've established your board.
It's the second meeting in March, isn't it?
What's that?
Yeah, that is the second meeting. I just think unless we're at risk of not being able to pay the bills come, you know, April or May, I think we should put, push it off a little bit longer.
My understanding is that's why this recommendation is coming from the superintendent, the business office and the special ed director.
I don't think that, that's not my understanding.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is stay true to our lines. Like, that's one of the things we're trying to do, right? Like, is stay true from a budgeting standpoint, is limit like crazy transfers. Like, like to like transfers, that's okay, right? Like, we're gonna talk about transfer, Julie's gonna talk about it in her report of a contracted service because we weren't able to fill a position, right? Like, so that's a transfer that makes logical sense, right? To find this type of money, we would have to probably pull this from a variety of lines that are not like, like lines, right? Like, we would have to pull and transfer money from a supply line, for example, or an equipment line and put it into this line. You can do that, right? But like, from a good financial standpoint, you want to try and make your transfers relevant to it, right? Like, if you're transferring from new equipment to, to replacement equipment, that makes sense. Maybe you found a deal on something and you wanted to change it and do replacements instead of new. If you're doing a personnel to contracted service because, because you weren't trying to hire something, there's a logic to that, right? The auditors appreciate that logic. Technically, we can pull from all these different accounts to cover all, like this type of money. But, you know, you try and stay likewise. So this is specifically, you have a trust fund for this. You can, you can utilize it to offset this. This meets the purpose of that trust fund. But like, like I said, there are some districts, when they take this approach, they, they will just pull it from their end of the year and not access their trust funds unless it's a significant more amount. But those are bigger districts and, and stuff.
Just to be clear, I'm not advocating for that to be our long, long-term process. However, we have not been, we, we have not been in a good budgeting process for a while in, in terms of like where we've been at. So I'm just saying, I think that by delaying a little bit, we can at least take a look and see. I think we really need to get ourselves to a place where we have the right amount in our reserve funds while also leveling out the tax impact for people. And if we are, I don't know where we're gonna be, but if we're at risk of return, not risk of, but if we're at a place where we have to return or looking at returning something like four hundred thousand dollars, we need to, we really need to get people more accustomed to what it feels like for what we budget, which is two hundred thousand dollars, right? So that's just where I'm at with that. I don't think that there's a rush to get this done. That's my only point on it. I'm not saying that I wouldn't vote in favor of this come May, you know, one, once we have a better feel of what the financials look like.
Couple, couple things. One, I don't think it's a bad thing if we have an opportunity to return four hundred thousand dollars to the taxpayers. Two is a question, if we have this vote sooner rather than later to withdraw this sixty thousand dollars, are we required to take it then or can we leave it there until we need it? And, or, or take it out and park it and give it back?
I think we'd have to check some legal and how we word, what we, with the action we want to take in the public hearing, right? So the easiest, the cleanest, like, think about earlier this, this year when we took money out of the employee benefits fund, right? To pay for the employee benefits. It was a very specific dollar amount. We pulled it out and we immediately spent it. Not immediately, but right, like put it in. We knew exactly what we were spending on. It was to the penny. That's what we were spending on, right? If we pull this prior to the end of the school year, like, we're still gonna have an estimated amount. Like, we won't know that final dollar amount until June, like the end of June because that's when the school year officially wraps up and we've had every bill come in and, and everything associated with that. So it's still, we, we might be able to word our action and we would have to check with legal. I, I don't know, this would be the first time doing it. Could we go up to X amount to cover the cost of this specific item, right? You know, and it could be the difference in how to do wish, how to district. Like, we could really elongate that kind of like warrant article when you're talking about specific language that you're doing that. We would need to check with legal. They might say, nope, you have to write exactly a specific amount, take that out, then you're done, right? But that's an option we could pursue.
You think we have to remove it right then? We couldn't, we can't just.
I do think you have to remove it at that point, right? Like, because you're having the hearing to do it, right? Like, so there, you're expecting an action on it, right? Otherwise, you would just, just keep it there. But we can certainly ask legal. That's also why I wanted to bring it up this evening because I think we're gonna have questions follow up, right? So we, we can go to a legal after this meeting, get some, and more information, come back to the board next meeting, right? And answer some of these questions you guys have and then make a plan from there. We'd still be able to hit like that first meeting in April if that was the date that we wanted, or something else along those lines, right? But we wanted to start the discussion now and not have these questions come up in June where we're kind of against, against the wall on it and stuff like that.
I think that sounds like a good plan to ask. If anyone has any questions that haven't been asked right now, get them to Brian and Julie and then they can ask legal and give us that information at the next meeting. You made a motion, right?
I did.
And so there is. Do you withdraw your motion?
Sure.
Good. Motion withdrawn. We'll get some more information and go from there. All right. For that update.
Yeah, that's up for me. So turn things over, Joel.
Updated the school board financials as usual, as well as the transfers. As Brian alluded to, we are requesting a transfer. We are gonna have two vacant special education teacher positions at LMS. So we do need to contract for one of those. We're unable to fill. So we have found a person that is under the Emergents Education Staffing. Principal Grantham and the Special Services Director interviewed this person and feels that they'll be able to carry out the duties of the job for the remainder of the school year. So we are requesting to transfer thirty-six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars from salaries and benefits to contracted services so that we may hire this individual.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to transfer thirty-six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars from salaries and benefits to contracted services.
Okay, thank you. All second. Additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Five zero.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give an update on the, on Griffin, the soffit repair. I was talking last meeting about the eaves on the roof. So I guess it's the soffit panels that need to be replaced, that have deteriorated. I have an RFQ that I've prepared that legal is taking a look at. Once we have that finalized, I can share that with you. And then we'll be prepared to post that so that we can take some bids for that.
Good.
To make sure we get that taken care of.
Is there a timeline on that?
So within the RFQ, I do need to put some dates in there. So I'm looking for like the beginning of March to post it. And then with it being, I think April would be the timeline for us to actually be able to move forward with the bids.
Okay.
We have a temporary fix, right, Dave? Did something?
Yes, we have a temporary fix, but we need to address that.
Yep.
Okay.
Lots of clamps and stuff.
And then also with regard to Griffin, I wanted to mention that the copiers. We have, we had an email from a teacher that was concerned about the copier situation there. Obviously at the elementary school, there's a lot more photocopies that need to be made for students, just the way that that is with the age of the students. And currently, there are two copiers that we own there that are hand-me-downs and are very old and not working very well. One of them was in use quite a bit, but it, there was actually a smell coming from it that they were, weren't sure where in the building. It was definitely coming from the copier, electrical smell. So we are no longer using that because we do not want to risk having an electrical fire, understandable. So that machine is going to be out of commission. So we do have one, we have two leased copiers at Griffin. One is in the main office and then the main one for teachers is in the hallway. So we are looking to see pricing on getting another copier to lease to replace the old one that we need to get rid of. So I'll have more information for you on that, but we're looking at options for that.
That would have been a great budget item.
It would have been, indeed.
Do you happen to know on the leased copiers, how often they change the machines out to newer machines?
So they, not usually, very frequently. We, I don't think we've done that at all at GMS. They just keep coming back and repairing, repairing, repairing. I mean, obviously we can push that if that was necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I just would wonder at what point are you leasing something that you're now like paying more than it would have cost to just buy it? Because I know like a lot of times with the leases, the benefit is that you can get into a new machine. So you're paying, but they continue to, it's on them. But if they're just leasing us some.